The April 7th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Today, I'll be leading the Pledge of Allegiance, so can everyone please stand and face the nearest flag? Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Are we complete? Are all five people complete? Are we complete or not yet? Eric, are we complete?
Councilmember Reyes English, I don't think she's logged on yet.
Okay, alright. So, four members of the City Council are present. We're waiting on, Councilmember English will be joining us shortly. Madam Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, the public shall directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting.
Right, do we have any communications?
Yes, we have five speakers. I'm gonna call the first one right now.
Okay, and yes, we'll give you an opportunity to load them up as you need, okay?
Hi, this is the Google Assistant. Can I ask what you're calling about?
Hi Matt, hi Matt.
Yes.
Hi, it's Diana. I'm ready for you to speak. Let me just put you on speakerphone, hold on one sec. Okay, let's see. Can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Council, can you hear the speaker?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Matt. You have three seconds, I mean, three minutes.
Hi, my name is Matt Faro. I'm a resident of Hawthorne. I live just blocks away from Hawthorne Mall. I'm calling today to encourage the council to consider turning the Hawthorne Mall into public housing. As you all are aware, we are facing an unprecedented and historic housing crisis in Los Angeles. We have tens of thousands of people living on our streets. And the Hawthorne Mall is the perfect place to house them. This is because it's close to a metro station, it's on a major bus line, and it's been a blight on our community for over thirty years. You know, housing is a human right, it should be at least. And Hawthorne should start trying to provide its residents with permanent housing. I think that we really have a great opportunity to show leadership here, to be a city that shows, hey, we can do this. We can build housing for people, permanent housing. That's the solution to our crisis right now. In the coming months and years, homelessness is going to get worse. We know this. There are many studies that show this, and it's just common sense. Okay, people haven't been able to pay their rent for six, seven, eight months. They're gonna get evicted eventually, and when they do, they're gonna end up on our streets. If we don't build housing for them, they're gonna live in our parks, on our sidewalks, on our freeways. This is not anything anybody wants. As someone who advocates for the unhoused, they don't wanna live there either. They want housing. Despite what people say, they are not service resistant. They want to live in a house just like you and me, okay? And the problem is, housing in Hawthorne and all of LA is just unaffordable for the average person. Unless you're making a hundred thousand dollars a year, it is almost impossible to get housing in our city and in our county, okay? Most people just do not make that much money. I don't make that much money, okay? So, don't do office space. Office space is dying. Why would you do, we just did a whole year without office space, and everything was more or less fine. We don't need another huge useless set of offices. We don't need expensive, unaffordable Playa Vista housing. What we need is public housing that allows us to place values on things other than profit. You know, we want lots of different people living in our community. We want a diverse, beautiful community. That's where Hawthorne is now, and that's where I want it to stay. I don't wanna see gentrifiers coming into our community, rich people who are mostly white, and don't, we want working class people. We want real people. We want people who build things, who do things, who are good, decent folk. And public housing allows us to house these people and bring them into our community in a way that just a private development never will. So I'm asking you, please, encourage the city to look into this. You could get the governor, you could get Bradford, you can get Maxine Waters on this. I'm sure everybody wants to win. Alright, thank you for my time. Bye.
Thank you, Matt.
Just for clarification for the public, this property is not owned by the City of Hawthorne. It's privately owned by a group of individuals. So, we'd like for you guys to keep this in mind. Okay, next person?
Okay, our next speaker is Maggie. Go ahead, Maggie.
Before the speaker starts,
Oh, sorry.
we would like to acknowledge that Councilmember Reyes English has joined us. So, the council body is complete. Go ahead, Speaker.
Okay, go ahead, Maggie.
Oh, hi. Before I get started, I just wanted to let you know, I'm watching also live, and it is a little hard to hear the public speakers. I don't know, it's probably not something you can deal with today, but for the future, you might wanna think about a different way of amplifying them, because it's pretty hard to hear what people are saying. And I know for a fact that Matt has a super loud voice. So, probably if you can't hear him, you won't be able to hear anyone. Anyway, I am calling to sort of echo some of the things that last caller said. I think considering building office space is pointless, like, we don't need offices, obviously. More and more businesses are moving to remote work. What we need is affordable and public housing specifically. The median income for somebody in Hawthorne, I believe this is from 2019, is only, is a household income. So it's probably multiple people, of fifty-four thousand dollars a year. It's a simple fact that what's being presented for the Hawthorne Mall is not gonna be affordable to the people of Hawthorne. We need solutions for the people who live here, many of whom are already struggling. Not fancy condos for people from other parts of the city to come and gentrify our town. Part of what I love about living here is how diverse it is. I really appreciate living in this community, and I would hate to see that be destroyed so that we can create housing that doesn't really benefit anyone who lives here and just brings in people from other places to kind of change the makeup of our town, right? And I think it's really important, as Matt mentioned, to also consider the racial implications of something like that, right? We are a majority-minority town. Of course, race intersects very closely with cost and income, because we live in a racist society. So, not only are we talking about making housing that's inaccessible to the people who live here, we're talking about making housing that's inaccessible to the people of color who call this community home. I'm not in that community. I am myself white, so I don't want to appropriate that. But I do think that that's important to consider for, you know, a body that considers itself focused on social justice, as I've heard people on this community say that they are, to consider what the implications of bringing in just a bunch of really expensive housing are. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Next person, please?
Okay, the next caller is Andrea. Go ahead, Andrea.
Hello, my name is Andrea, and I'm calling today to urge City Council to utilize the space of the abandoned mall to create free, permanent, public housing, utilizing the input and needs assessed by community members for community members of Hawthorne, and to subtract private developers out of the equation so we don't see more burdened costs with money flaps or community spending going to people and companies that don't care about people at all, that only care about profits. I'm urging you all today to vote for the well-being of the community members that have lived in this community and to keep Hawthorne diverse. We don't need another gentrified, unaffordable city. We need community services for our community. We need fair, free, and permanent public housing. Thank you. I yield my testimony.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you. Next, please?
Okay, our next speaker is Ruben. Go ahead, Ruben.
Hi, good morning. This is Ruben Sanchez with the North Hawthorne Community Association. Just wanted also add, one of the speakers, I believe their name was Andrea. She's not Andrea from North Hawthorne, just wanted to clarify that. So, just wanted to make that clear. The other thing I wanted to say is that I know we're talking about the Hawthorne Mall, and you're gonna have a lot of these individuals talking about, oh, we need low-income housing and so on. But the truth, the fact of the matter is here is that we need ordinance, we need codes. We need all this in place before anyone can speak about any kind of building, any kind of construction. You guys don't have this. You don't have this. This is something that could protect the quality of life of all the residents and also help a lot of our code enforcement to give them those tools to enforce this with these vacant lots. Because other than that, we have like the RFK Building, we have the Hawthorne Mall, and all these other empty lots in Revilla, that these developers are holding our community hostage for so many years. Since we started fifteen years ago, they've been holding hostage. The mayor, you know this very, very well, and the rest of you know this very well. You know, all of you guys have been there for many years and understand, but no one has ever implemented the right ordinance and codes to protect the quality of life. The kind of ordinance that they use like in the beach cities or the mountain communities, where you cannot have an empty lot for over three or five years without building on it, or else you get leamed on it, where the city takes over. Then you can start talking, and it's not eminent domain. That's when you can start talking about developing housing and so on. But right now, we don't have those barriers in place. And it's shameful that all of you have been there for many years. For God's sake, Angie English left, and she got voted out, now she back in. And you know, and they're still not bringing anything up. You guys talk about the blight fee. That's nothing. That's like having long grass. That's more like for residential. You know, you're gonna have all these developers, they're gonna be pushing all these councils, all these new council people coming in with hundreds of thousands of dollars, because they know there's weakness in our city. You are there to protect it. You were placed, you were voted in to protect our city. We need code, and we need ordinance to protect our cities. Start working on it. You know exactly what I'm talking about. And I know you guys are gonna talk about it afterwards, whatever. You wanna debate me, you wanna talk to me, you know where to find me. You too, Alex, you've been there long enough. All of you guys there, Valentine, Angie, and Alex Montero, you guys been there long enough to understand this. Let's start talking about real stuff, ordinance and codes to protect. Because right now, our code enforcement is overworked, our city employees, and also our police department. They're doing such a great job with the homelessness, with the police department. They are the backbone of our community. If it wasn't for them, we would really be in the bad place.
Hi, Ruben.
Do your job.
Your time's up.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Next person?
Sounds good.
Okay, our next speaker is Eddie. Eddie, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Eddie Cruz. I stay kind of close, or what used to be, of the Hawthorne City Mall. I'm calling in regard of item Agenda Four. Seeing as how we are living in unprecedented times where we haven't seen a housing crisis like this in LA and across the South Bay ever, I think it's important for the City Council to take into consideration of turning the Hawthorne City Mall into public housing to mitigate and to help people that are unhoused and have, are not just trying to survive. I know the mayor mentioned something about that the Hawthorne City Mall doesn't belong to the city, but rather to a private investor or corporation. I think the city should take into, should use some form of eminent domain in order to purchase this property for the public. And if the city doesn't have eminent domain, I think there should be some initiative in the City Council to make some, to make some strides forward to implement eminent domain. I think eminent domain in this situation would be helpful for the community, seeing that the essence of eminent domain is to buy private property for the public use and for the general public. As the caller before me mentioned, the Hawthorne City Mall has been abandoned for, I wanna say about like twenty years. I've been around here for twenty-four years, and since my lifetime, I've seen that mall empty, not doing anything. No one has done anything to it, and it seems like no one has planned to do anything with it. So, for the Hawthorne City Council to allow this for twenty-four years and not to take any initiative to purchase it, to construct it and to reinvent it for the public, it shows a lot where the City Council stands with its constituents. I think Hawthorne can be, can show that City of LA and cities across the South Bay can be the leader to creating sustainable housing for the unhoused and to other community members who are in threat of being evicted or whose housing situation is really unstable. Please, City Council, we urge you, the constituents, to take into consideration and to use some form of eminent domain, or to make some strides forward to use eminent domain to purchase this private property and to return it to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you. Thank you. Next person?
That's all.
Alright. Anything, anybody, so there's no more people? I'll declare oral communications closed order. City Manager Eric Lee has an oral report on item number four.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Really just wanted to help tee off the discussion that you're about to have with our consultant, Christopher Beck of Newmark Knight &amp; Frank. As you're aware, Mr. Beck attended our last special meeting with the owners of the Hawthorne Mall, which was, I think about two or three weeks ago. Mr. Beck is really the city's subject matter expert as it relates to commercial real estate issues in the Southern California area. He's familiar with the property and its owners, and you're really hoping that this is a good first conversation that you are having directly with Mr. Beck. And with that, with your permission, Mayor, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Beck, and he can introduce himself to the council, and you can start your conversation.
Sounds good. Thank you. Mr. Beck?
Good morning. Thank you so much, Eric, and to the council, as well as to the mayor, for the opportunity to act as a consultant on behalf of the city for this really exciting, you know, piece of property. You know, background of myself, I've been in commercial real estate for twenty years, twenty-plus years, with one of the largest firms in the world, publicly traded firm. However, I am near and dear to Hawthorne. Family owned a business not too far from there, born and raised in Los Angeles. Don't live too far from the site, actually live in Inglewood, just to the north. I frequent the city often. And to echo some of the constituents' comments, it's a piece of property that has very much meaningful impact, but has not been quote-unquote "in play" for several decades, which is something that obviously is imperative to, not only to the city, but the constituents within the city. So, with that being said, the purpose of this is to have dialogue with the council, with the mayor and staff as it relates to the long-term purpose and plans as you see for the site, and for me to work, as I have done for many, many years, with, you know, municipalities, as well as the private sector, in really trying to bring the two groups together to form long-term, rather, stability for projects such as the Hawthorne Mall. I am not here to say, you know, what's the highest and best use? I am here to act as a, as sort of an expert in the field in terms of what I'm seeing in the marketplace, just between the groups. You know, I do anywhere between twenty to thirty transactions a year, and anywhere between seventy to eighty million dollars worth of transactions across multiple sectors, whether it's residential development, entertainment space, retail, industrial, office, the whole gambit. And, you know, I think, I think there is, as we all know, immense amount of potential for the subject site, and it's really just honing in on what the constituents and the elected officials feel would be the most advantageous long-term, while also keeping in mind that it is owned in the private sector by the Charles Company, who I have had the experience of working with before, obviously not on their behalf, but on the other side of the table. So I think there's quite a bit of insight and intellect and guidance that I can provide, not only to the city as it relates to the matter with them, but from a long-term standpoint as well.
Go ahead.
So, I guess my question, and I look at this as more of a conversation to better understand, you know, obviously, I participated in the March fifteenth discussion with the Charles Company and Ms. Withers as the leadership of the Charles Company, and there were quite a few various ideas that have been thrown, sort of, one being residential development project, building it to the highest level and capacity. And I do believe that there were members of the council that weren't comfortable with that. My one comment to it would be, in my experience in selling sites such as this size, or being involved in sites of this size, Uh, my one comment to it would be, in my experience in selling sites such as this size or being involved in sites of this size. Um, you know, one thing that jumped out at me was the lack of green space. Again, I'm not here to say whether or not residential is what. You know, in terms of the vision or what the long-term highest and best use. Um, there are a plethora of highest and best uses that essentially would fit into this. Twenty, twenty-five acre site, um, whether it's residential, whether it's. Um, a mixed project of residential and retail or a destination or. Studio space for content and television, uh, movies and content and gaming or, or, or a combination thereof. Um, and so, the demand will be there. Um, the supply is lacking. There's very few sites of this size in any of the infill areas of Los Angeles. And we say infill is, you know, um. Within the the greater South Bay marketplace, um, and really throughout greater Los Angeles. There's very few sites of this size. And so the demand is very much there. Um, it's really just a question of what. What would the council in in envision? Seeing there? What would you guys like to see there? And and I can give you. My analysis on on the viable nature in terms of of what I believe through my experience and and what I'm seeing in the marketplace today. Uh, what can happen there?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Beck?
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with the several iterations? Uh, of plans that the Charles Company has presented to us? Do you have the history of those?
I do have some of it, Mr. Mayor, but it, but it would always be helpful if you'd like to shed some additional light to that. Um.
Um, there's, there's a benefit, there's a, and you know, I would like for you to take a look at the history of, just to kind of see what the. Temperature, the the temp- temperature of the city council and the city have been over the last years culminating to where we're at. So, the first uh, the focus of like the first one or two of these. Uh, presence, these proposals in- included a large amounts of housing. Uh, whether it was townhomes or apartments or condos for sale or for rent. I don't remember, but large, large amounts, similar amounts of housing that we see now, wait, maybe with the big box store. And so we received about two or three of those iterations. And so I, the fourth iteration involved maybe uh, uh, like I said. Two big box stores and a couple of other entertainment options and. And a couple of other eateries to accompany that, but it still had that element of. The uh, of the of the housing, which seemed like the main focus of the presentations. And then, before the fifth iteration that they presented to us, we had a specific plan. Uh, that we went out to the community and even included the business community's input. And uh, we came up with some specs and I'm pretty sure that you're familiar with what the specific plan has included. And we received a presentation from the Charles Company, which uh essentially was uh, there was accommodations for the housing. But the, uh, there was the main exciting part about it was the. Uh, was the outlet mall concept that they were presenting. And uh, but it also included some office space, but the outlet mall aspect is what kind of got everybody's attention. We signed and started giving the permits for uh, for uh breaking ground. Uh, you know, the, the owner of the Charles Company came and we signed off, but. Um, unfortunately, they didn't break ground and uh, we didn't get moving along with that. So that's why we're here now, after maybe a year or two of that. So, do you, can I get some feedback from, back from you on that, Mr. Beck?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. I I am familiar with, with what uh you had mentioned in terms of what's transpired, you know.
Okay.
Um, over the last few years, certainly very well aware of the historic nature of the site, when it was transferred, when it was sold. What the purpose was several decades ago, um, twenty-five, thirty years ago when the site was sold and what was promised. Um, and what was not delivered. So very much aware of that. Um, my comment in terms of the outdoor mall concept. Is one that malls are struggling, um, and obviously retail has changed. Covid has changed the dynamics as it relates to how retail is handled. And if you look at it across multiple scales, whether it's, you know, malls in Phoenix. There was a recent mall in Phoenix that recently sold and has been closed and is going to, going to have a change of use. What's transpired in Carson with their plan for their outdoor mall on the hundred and fifty-seven acres contiguous to the four oh five freeway, that's now. Been uh, been scrapped. Um, Simon Property Group has backed out.
Oh, are you serious? That, that's really been scrapped, the whole outlet mall over there?
Uh, uh, my understanding is yes. My understanding is it's changing course, that Simon will not be. Now, whether or not there's some fragment of that, Mr. Mayor, is still to be determined, but in terms of Simon Property Group. Developing that uh, that, that, that dynamic has changed. Um, and a lot of that is, is, is due to Covid. Um, and 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 the dynamics of of what's changed and how people shop and decision maker, decision making is made by those groups.
Council member Patterson, do you have your hand up for, for, to speak or you just have it accidentally held up?
No, I actually had a question I wanted to ask.
Okay, go ahead, bud.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Beck, I have a quick question. What's the likelihood that any credible developer could build a project at that mall site? And it'd be profitable, it'd be a benefit to the community and it doesn't have any residential there?
It's a great question, Councilmember Patterson. Appreciate the, the opportunity again and thank you for uh, for asking. I think there is, there's viability. Um, and it's not just my opinion. If you look at. Various projects throughout sort of the greater Southern California marketplace, really the South Bay. And you use, you know, Playa Vista to sort of the Northwest quadrant, all the way down to Long Beach and Pacific Park. Pacific Park being north of the Long Beach Airport. Playa Vista obviously has a residential component, we're all aware of it, but it has a huge amount of retail. Rest in, uh, restaurant destination as well as creative office. Um, there's a big difference between office buildings that you see. Maybe to the west of the city on um, on Rosecrans, for example, um, where, where Fleming's is located, it's Continental Business Park. Those business parks and those office buildings are, have changed and it's more of a Playa Vista Pacific Park. Model where it's two-story building, three-story, single-tenant occupied assets. That's where we're seeing that particular marketplace go. Um, you know, office is still um, is still in need, um, depending on the sector of office. There's no question that the workforce and the workplace has changed um, due to Covid and post-Covid. And what we're seeing is um, users and occupants of that space. Um, want a controlled environment where their employees can have a comfort of work. But also know that they're not in shared common hallways, restrooms, ingress egress points. Um, but to answer your question, that's not just one level of it. There's also uh, the potential of studio space. Which Los Angeles is still the leader in studio space. I think we all think about studio space as, you know, live television. Uh, but that's not it with, with, with the emergence of YouTube, the emergence of other content creation based on smart television. Um, there's a whole gambit of another industry of, of production and content as well as gaming. Um, you know, I'll say this, I, I have a young son and I'm sure others have children who, you know. You can't get them off the video games anymore and I apologize for going there, maybe, maybe mine's the only one I can't get off, but. You know, again, there's all these various mechanisms and where this land parcel sits and where the city of Hawthorne sits is right in the heart, in the beacon. Of where all of this is going on. And then, of course, there's other smart um, technology-based firms. Um, that are in and around the greater area, uh, specifically. That are in the, you know, Smoky Hollow or El Segundo marketplace or even Playa Vista. Again, the, 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 the concept of um, big box retail has changed due to Covid. The concept of destination mall has changed due to Covid. Um, and all we have to do is look at the various data points. I hope I answered your question, Councilmember Patterson.
I just want to confirm though, so we don't have to feel any pressure to allow any kind of residential if we don't want to. In order to, uh, a later, in order for this site to be developed into something that generates revenue for the community. And that, that, that makes money for the developer and that benefits the community. We don't have to, we don't need to feel any pressure to allow any kind of residential for that. Site to work.
Uh, from a, from a, from a private sector business standpoint, absolutely not. There should be no pressure on that. The demand for a twenty to twenty-five acre marketplace, or twenty to twenty-five acres is so vast. Um, that you are correct, there should be no pressure felt by you guys based upon.
The viability of the project, correct. Right. We can choose to want to do that because we think the community might need it or we may want some. Some uh senior housing or whatever the case might be because we think the community might benefit from it, but uh, we, we don't need to have any, feel like that. The developer needs that in order to, to make a project work.
That's correct, Councilmember Patterson. I will also say, um, in that concept would be still open space, green space. And a welcoming to the community. So if that was a concept that ended up being what. Um, the elected body wanted to do and the developer was able to, you know, everything was able to work out. There is still, should be um, community benefits, um, such as parks and other recreational sort of things. Restaurant destination, location sort of things. Um, so it becomes sort of a public-private partnership and I believe. Um, I don't believe, I know that the developers would, would do that in a heartbeat. Um, again. I'm not here to say what you should or shouldn't do. I'm simply answering the question as it relates to the viable nature in the private sector development.
And I have one, one last question though. What do you think would um, produce the most economic benefit to the city? Like, wh- what type of development? Um, do you think would produce the greatest economic, economic benefit to the city of Hawthorne?
You know, from my perspective, I think it's a, it's a, it's a little bit of a slippery slope. I think a, 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 a smorgasbord or an à la carte. Sort of concept where there are fragments of each of the sectors we're talking about would likely be the highest and best economic. Um, because of the multiple reasons as I stated, if there's gaming or, or any sort of content creation, studio space or creative office. Um, with, with retail surrounding it, um, it creates jobs, it creates tax revenue for the city. It also with green space and welcoming environment would also bring in, um, you know, constituents into the actual development. And making it sort of a home, um, or a destination location. Simply due to the geographical location of City Hall and other things. I think there's this rare opportunity where you've got these twenty to twenty-five acres. Directly across from really the s- the city center. Um, I believe it, it could be a really good partnership. Um, through and through and, and the vision being um, one that would be, you know, a seamless vision or simultaneous vision with, with that development group. So I think if you hit all.
Susan, economic, economic purposes, it'd be um, a good idea, economic purposes. To have a little bit of everything, some creative office space, some retail, um, you know, studio. And even some residential, uh, that has some open space park and all that stuff.
Sure, and you know, look, it all, it all depends on the temperature of the residential. If the residential is not something that coexists or is comfortable. There could still be a, a, a green space, open space, destination, location, um, provided. So, so yes, I, I would say that and, and I would just ask the group, uh, that being the, the elected. Council and the mayor, when I'm referencing Playa Vista or I'm referencing Pacific Park or I'm referencing West Side Pavilion, which. Google took five hundred thousand square feet. The, basically the old, I'm sure we all remember the old West Side Pavilion, or i- if you don't, it was, it was an outdoor mall, I mean essentially. And uh, again, due to the way that the malls have changed even pre-Covid. Um, the, the, that has now been pre-leased essentially, five hundred thousand square feet to Google. Um, I asked the group, have you been to these places in my, in my speaking? In a manner that you're not familiar with, um, if I am, please stop me because I keep using those as examples and I certainly don't want to. Uh, be presumptuous to think that everyone knows, um, what I'm referencing, if, if you don't.
I can get, I'm not that familiar with the spot north of uh, Long Beach Airport.
Okay.
But uh, the rest of the locations are where we.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Um, yeah, just, I'm gonna say one brief comment before I pass it on to you. Um, I really appreciate Councilmember Patterson for uh. Going direct to the, the main concerns that I had, um, they're even more direct than I probably would have been. So I appreciate you asking those questions. Um, do we, are we restrict, do we have to accept proposals for residential when, you know? We always hear, we always hear the argument, oh, it doesn't pencil itself out. It doesn't pencil itself out. Uh, for us, you always hear that it doesn't pencil out, it doesn't pencil out, it doesn't pencil out. And uh, yeah, we just wanted, needed the extra confirmation that that's the case.
Mr. Mayor, that just means the profit went from twenty-five percent to twenty percent. It still pencils out, it just may not be that.
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't pencil out and, and unfortunately, some of my council members, they know it, that, that was an issue with me and uh.
And, and I just, I don't want to interrupt, I do want to make one other comment and that is, um. I've sold all, I've been involved in all those transactions on the seller side, the buyer side and the municipality side. Um, look, I'm, I'm here to be a, a, an intermediary between your world, which is an important world and running the day-to-day. You know, of the city of Hawthorne versus the private sector world and, and really be able to. To do those box checks like, like Councilmember Patterson and, and Mr. Mayor, you just asked, which are, is that true? Is that viable? That's what I'm here to do. I'm, I'm, I'm here to, to create that, um, and explain to that. I also, you know, I handle. Uh, a lot of the real estate matters as it relates to Marvel, um, and Disney and um, um, you know, that's how I can say.
Then the, the second part of, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, it's okay, Mr. Mayor.
The second part of uh, Councilmember Patterson's question was uh, economic benefit for the community. So, let's think about it. What about our residents that are here? What things do they need to increase the quality of life? We always have been hearing about the uh, entertainment, the re- the, the commercial aspect, being able to shop and dine within our city. My thing is, why bring more people to live in our city? When we don't have the basic things to keep the people that we already have here happy and we're not making room for any of those benefits of uh. Comfortable eating and shopping within our own city. It's the same thing. We've just kind of uh passed on. We've uh perpetuated that same uh deficit that we've had, so. I really appreciate, I mean, what do you think about that, Mr. Beck?
No, I mean, I think, I think you're right and I mean, I think, I think there's, there's definitely some validity to that. I mean, look, you've got. Inglewood to the north, that's, that, that, where I live, right? Um, and I've lived for many decades. Um. That is going that route with heavy residential development, heavy entertainment and destination location. Um, they don't have the creative office component. They have a small piece of it, um, adjacent to SoFi Stadium, but they have a small piece of it. Um, when you go to the west of you to El Segundo, which as we all know historically was very large in the um. Um, aerospace and other industry, they've already started to transform into a lot of creative, creative office space such as Smoky Hollow area, which is west of Sepulveda. Um, in addition to some retail and, and, and location. I, I envision the, 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 the highest and best use here would be to, to piggyback. And create solutions that other marketplaces that surround you don't have.
Mayor Protem, Valentine, your turn?
Thank you. Um, yes, Mr. Beck, I absolutely agree with you. Um, and following along to. Uh, what was said by uh, council, uh, council member Patterson. What did you see in the present, presentation we were given on March fifteenth? That would fit into what Councilmember Patterson said and also your discussion about the creative office space. And also what I had raised at uh, about being complimentary to Inglewood. We can't compete with Inglewood and I agree with that, but what we should do should be complimentary. If people are going to Inglewood for one particular kind of thing, they could come to Hawthorne also and get something else. So what in that presentation that you saw on March fifteenth from the developers fits into. What you discussed with Councilmember Patterson and what you also said about the creative office space and the. What would produce the greatest economic benefit to us and allow us to. Um, not compete with Inglewood, but complement Inglewood. What do you see? What, in other words, what did they present that you see that we can use?
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem, for the, for the question and appreciate the opportunity to, to answer your question. Um. I thought the presentation was good, but I think it, it, it really didn't have much to what we're discussing today. I think it was. Hey, let's build as many residential units as we can. That seems to be the easiest path to resistance. Um, as the mayor, Mr. Mayor pointed out is, well, that's the only thing that pencils. Um, I would say that there's two pieces to your question, Mayor Protem. One is, what did I see? Versus the viable nature of being able to build a project of this size. So there's two components, right? So there's the, hey, let's build this. But you still gotta pay for it, right? So you gotta go get the financing and the debt to do it, which is another piece of the conversation, perhaps we can discuss later. Um, I didn't see much there. I didn't see much there. I was I was pretty surprised at the lack of green space. If we're just going to talk about what they presented in terms of the residential unit, I was very surprised at the lack of green space. And I do feel, back to to Councilmember Patterson's question, that there is a viable viable development opportunity here that does not necessarily include residential. And I believe some of those complementary uses could be studio, it could be content. It could be creative office that is more of a flex type that that are ancillary, you know, components to the SpaceX, to the Teslas, to the aerospace industry directly to the west of you, whether it's Raytheon, McDonald Douglas, but also things such as architectural firms, entertainment firms. And when I say entertainment, I mean, things that are piggybacking off of what's in Inglewood. I mean, if you recall, what's being built at SoFi Stadium isn't just a football stadium. There's half a million square feet of of traditional office space, which is about a five or six-story tower where the NFL Network will be will be moving their headquarters there. There's also a large amount of park in in, I believe, half a million to a million square feet of retail. In addition to on the on the south side at the corner of Prairie and Century, the Clippers brand-new basketball stadium, which will have seventy-five thousand square feet of workout space in their headquarters. So, you know, businesses are opportunities that fill into that. One thing that continues to explode is the content and 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 tech, excuse me, content and television production. There is a mass amount of demand for that and very, very little supply of it. But also, in 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 conjunction with all that, are like retail pods, destination-location restaurant pods on the exterior, similar to kind of what you see off of Rosecrans, where there's Paul Martin's and there's and there's Fleming's and there's Houston's. And I'm not saying those are the restaurants that come here, but what I'm saying is you've got destination sort of on the periphery, on the outside, with these creative facilities or content, content, film and television, content uses within there in addition into green space.
One of the, okay, so I do have one of my councilmember colleagues hands up.
Yeah, I'll be next too, okay, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
If I could be next after Councilmember Montero, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go from myself to Patterson, to Montero, and then to English, alright?
I guess that's a good thing. There's questions, right?
Jesus, I think I lost what I was going to.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Man, why do you guys do that to me? Okay, go. Oh, no, here goes. Here goes the question. Alright. Fundamental, I see like one, one of the things that I think we're hearing here is like, how do we do the job of filling up the tenant space for the developer? That's what I'm kind of hearing. Oh, why don't we put this in? Why don't we put that in? But I think referring back to what Councilmember Patterson said, what is the economic benefit to the city? So my question to you, Mr. Beck, is we're talking about what is the economic benefit? What is the sales tax? What is the money revenue that comes to the city from each of these different sectors that we're contemplating? You got the residential. We know that we already know that property tax, the pass-through to a municipality is is pennies. You know, it's 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 a pittance. It's nothing. We, you know, we're talking, we know that resident, we know that commercial restaurants and commercial gives us money. But then you're also you're also talking about these studios. I mean, those are not point of sales. What what are we gonna get from that? Well, we're gonna just have people working around here and shopping and in our existing restaurants and commercial and what's the, I mean, we already have a ton of people from SpaceX. It's not like if we don't have more businesses that they could shop at, I mean. So each of these sectors that we're contemplating, I think we need to rank them in revenue for the city to be able to contemplate what's the economic benefit to the city, just like my customer colleague said. What do you have to say about that, boss?
No, I I think it's a great point, Mr. Mayor. And and I think we would need to dive into that more and really rank that. And I think it's prudent and 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 I would like to make one other comment that I would add to that in the analysis. And that would be the social, the social econo, the social impact. There is an ability, you can't force people to do anything, right? But at the end of the day, if it's a true public-private part in high school or in college or even, you know, older folks are looking for a job transition or just looking for jobs. Where each of these groups, whether it's the developer who builds it or the end user who comes in across any of these sectors, have some sort of job training, job placement, internships for those that are younger and not internships on the basic level, but internships at the higher level, whether it's in the accounting department, the legal department, the C-suite. So that it really becomes, there's an economic piece that I agree, we need to, you know, obviously dive into and rank. But I also believe there's a potential to do a social justice piece. Because what I found in my endeavors with corporate America is they want to now, obviously, given what's transpired over the last twelve to eighteen months, really take an initiative to be more socially conscientious and are willing to do it. I believe it's it's the, I believe we can help or you can help, not me, but those who are elected can help make that as part of the initiative as well. So it ends up not only being an economic, but 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 also.
Exactly. But then the local hire aspect, you know, we can't tell them, hey, hire and train only Hawthorne people. So this this is going to get whittled down or it's gonna, it gets lost, I think. We can't, we can't tell them just to hire Hawthorne people and train them people. So it's like, you know, it becomes a regional impact when it comes to that. So I like to think that we would like to help Hawthorne residents first, however we could help them first. I think that's would be one of my considerations. But I appreciate that idea. Councilmember Patterson.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, Mr. Beck. You know, we discussed kind of options, what what could go at that at that location? And ideas about combinations of different types of uses. I guess my 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 next question is, based on your experience of the Charles Company, what where is their area competency at? Like, do they have the capacity, the experience? I know they have money, but you know, do they have the expertise in any or all of these uses that we discuss? Or is it even, or is that even a relevant question?
Oh, I think it's a very relevant question. I appreciate it, Councilmember. I have some concerns as it relates to that. Yes, they're a viable developer. Yes, they've built and they've been successful. But I do have some concerns as it relates to the amount of capital it's going to take to build something of this size. We've also gone through multiple real estate cycles, typically a real estate cycle on the commercial side is anywhere between eight to ten years. Ten being the peak and then obviously readjusting. We've been through several several real estates, real estate up and down, and nothing's happened. We've also been the last ten years, really the last eight to ten years, the cheapest debt you could ever get, meaning you can't get money any cheaper than you can today. And still nothing's really happened. So it really concerns me. I I haven't seen an example, and and matter of fact, Ms. Withers and her development and and looking at my notes here, did not use any of those as an example. She used an outlet mall. I believe in Collexico in addition to Palm Springs. So, yes. They are developers. They've done a great job, but this is not, I have not seen them do something of this scale in this environment, meaning where this location is. I mean, it's 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 concerning to me based upon the the mechanisms that I just or the the things I just referenced in terms of the multiple real estate cycles we've been through since they've owned the property. In addition to, why hasn't been built in the last eight years? When money's been the cheapest and the man's been the greatest.
So you're saying that if they had the money and the ability, they would have done so by now because there's been lots of opportunities over the last twenty years far as demands of different types of product type and cost of money. And you're saying that just that based upon what they build, they haven't shown that they have a actual experience in developing many things that we're discussing?
Well, I will, I will say yes to part of it, right? Because I can't say why they didn't do it. All you can do is look around you and what's been built. There's been, there's been a foot, you know, a five-billion-dollar football stadium built, but yet twenty acres couldn't be redeveloped in Hawthorne. And I'm not, I'm not minimizing it by any stretch. But look at the various natures. I mean, I'm a native LA guy that lived in the city my whole life. And we've seen over the last thirty years how much development has transpired while the mall has sat and these folks have promised the world and delivered nothing. And again, I'm not here to judge. I'm not, I'm not landblasting, you know, the the Charles Company. I'm simply just answering the question. When you look in and around, things have been developed throughout LA County and this has sat. And that's concerning to me. And the other sites that have not been built have had mass amounts of environmental contamination, hence why it's taken so long to build. So the only other thing I can look at is the hundred fifty-seven acres in Carson, which had major, that's a landfill site. So it takes a long, long time to get cleaned up into a level of development. So I'm hopeful that answers your question, but those are big time, big time concerns of mine. Developers are in the business of building. They're not in the business of buying and holding.
Thanks.
For decades.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Beck, for coming to, you know, explore with us. Actually, Mr. Patterson just, you know, took my my thunder because I was going to tell you to explain to us if you know why Charles Company, right, have let all these opportunity, you know, pass by. And 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 the only thing that they've been telling us at least since two thousand fifteen is is housing, 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 right? Because two thousand fifteen, they wanted, it was approved to build six hundred unit and plus commercial. And then, you know, he didn't build. Then now he's coming with nineteen hundred unit, right? So we need to figure it out if this mall, if he had put, you know, on the market for sale, how much he's asking for it or not asking for it. He have any idea that he's wanted to sell this mall? And for us to discuss what what we want to put on that mall or even to do all these beautiful things that you have mentioned and Ms. Valentine and 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 David Perrin and even Mr. Mayor, we have to be frankly, we need to talk about what is the, what is the near future for us? Do we have any success? Or ability to succeed with Charles with Charles Company or we, the city, have to go one step ahead and say, we're gonna take this mall by receivanship or by eminent domain? Because that's the only way we going to build something that that will benefit the city of Hawthorne and and the people of Hawthorne. Because Charles Company have no interest in build anything that's going to benefit the city and the and the people. He just wants to build those houses to benefit his pocketbook. That's it. So please explain to me.
Sure, no question. And 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 that's a great point. I appreciate the the commentary. I will say a few things. I think number one, yes, I have, it is not currently being marketed for sale. I have confirmed that back pre-COVID, and I want to say it was two thousand eighteen, I I have received the package from a group that had basically showed me that they put it on the market for sale. Never got it to the next level, never sold it, obviously. And the rumor on the private sector side, meaning as I've gone and and haven't reached out to them directly, obviously not, but have reached out to various groups that fit the box of that, what we discussed earlier, whether it's studio or creative office or retail. I've gone out to the big players who who are all very, very familiar with the site. And the rumor in the marketplace was, oh, well, Amazon's getting that site. So and 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 again, don't kill the messenger. It's not me. I just went and did my homework and went and asked each of the groups. So obviously, that's not the case. And so I quickly, you know, said, that's not the case. And that is not what's going to, what's transpiring there now. And they asked what was transpiring? And I said, you know, it's to be determined. I think there's a major, there's two prongs to this. It's not just the viable nature of what they want to build or what the council wants, but how do you pay for it? People don't pay cash to build projects of this site. This is a massive project. If you use the existing structures, fine. If you demo it, it's even more. The market value on this site is astronomical as well. You don't have a lot of million square feet land parcels laying around greater Los Angeles. In addition to it, there are a few challenges. You know, it's more of a rectangular nature than a square nature, but that's not something that can't be over, that that can't be mitigated or taken care of. I have, I have concerns about it. I have concerns about their 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 ability to build. If they were approved for six hundred units with retail, why wasn't it built? Debt has been cheap forever. And I'd say that for interest rates haven't moved anywhere but down or stayed flat, really, for the last eight to nine years. I'm hopeful that answers your question, but I I have some concerns and.
What is the, what is the latest?
Let him keep going, Mr. Mayor. He hasn't finished. Answer my question. Come on.
Well, he paused. No, but real quick, how much is this thing worth? The property?
Um, that's a good question. I would say, I would say likely in back of the napkin, without looking at any of the demolition costs or any potential hazardous sizes of it, whether there's asbestos or whatever on the internal side, I would say anywhere between seventy-five to eighty million dollars, which is about seventy-five to eighty dollars a square foot on land. And that's a conservative price. It could be much higher than that.
Alright. I'll I'll comment on that later. Go ahead and finish answering Mr. Montero's question.
Sure, Mr. Montero, I'm a Councilmember Montero. I apologize. I I, which part did I not?
Well, the 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 thing is like, you know, we know Charles Company is not going to build this mall, frankly, you know. Because when when they give us these nineteen hundred unit, it's just, it's just, it's just to present a face, right? And then keep, keep, keep doing the same thing he's been done for twenty years, doing nothing, right? And 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 I don't know why he keep holding on that mall if he doesn't have no vision like you described. Because, you know, when when I drive by even La Zanica, I see, you know, fresh, Amazon Fresh or or Google Fresh, every building is being taken. And then here we are, nothing is happening in 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 Hawthorne at mall. So I I don't know if he's got a groucho against Hawthorne or something, but what my thing is, what can we do in the long run if if we really want to take control of that mall? Because we know he doesn't want to sell it because, you know, some people have offered him eighty-million-dollar cash. He didn't accept it. You know, and then he continued to play this game. So how how can the city of Hawthorne take control of that mall? Because it doesn't belong to us. But how can we do it that that could could create a a a public-private partnership to do what we need to do, you know, to benefit the city and the people of Hawthorne?
No, appreciate that. And I'll give you two comments. Number one, back to Mr. Mayor, your question on value. That is a very light value. I mean, I do believe it's worth a lot more than that, but since you asked me and I don't have all the information in front of me, I I'll shoot from the hip on that, but I think it's worth more than that. Number one. Back to your question, Councilmember Montero. I'll use an example. Don't take my word for it. Look at the track record. They own a three-and-a-half-acre site at Exposition in Crenshaw, which is right near West Angeles Church, if those are familiar with that area. I've been personally involved in repositioning all the assets contiguous to theirs, whether it was the old Unified Grocery Site where they manufactured milk to now it's, it was sold to a developer where Sweet Greens is relocating their headquarters from Culver City to the Crenshaw corridor. And that's a ninety thousand square foot deal. GOAT, the online shoe company, has moved to Crenshaw, as has The RealReal, which is a publicly traded company that's also gone there, in addition to a PACE program, which provides senior healthcare and College Track, which is job, excuse me, college training for black and brown individuals in the community. There's twelve locations throughout the country that that I represent, and that's that's the widow of Steve Jobs, the founder of Apple, his wife Lorraine's initiative. So there's over a hundred million dollars worth of assets that have changed hands, be repositioned, and are now moving in. And this land site is still sat there. And this is adjacent to two passenger rail locations, meaning you can get on, walk outside, get on the rail and be in Santa Monica in fifteen minutes or downtown in twenty-five minutes. And then at the end of this year, you can get on the rail there and be at LAX in twenty-five minutes. And it still hasn't been built. So again, I'm not here to landblast anyone. I just look at the track record and I look at the history of sites of this size that continuously that are owned by them, that 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 the narrative changes. They first wanted one thing at that site, then it changed to another. Now it's changed to another. The patternistic behavior of the Hawthorne Mall and this particular land site are eerily similar in the lack of development that's take place, but yet these are two very large parcels, quite frankly, held in communities of of, you know, black and brown descent, that nothing's happened. So I think there's a fundamental question across multiple levels. Why haven't these been built? You've owned them forever. What's going on? Now, I can speculate as to why. You've owned them forever, um, what's going on now, I can speculate as to why. The Hawthorne Mall hasn't had a lot of, uh, development, I, I can't speculate on the personal side or how they feel personally. But I can look at it from the investment standpoint and that being, they paid very little if nothing for the mall decades ago. They were able to secure the county as a tenant paying a premium, so their basis is very low. What they paid versus what they're getting on a return is astronomical. So they're sitting there saying, well, um, let's let sleeping dogs lie, I'll continue to make my mass amounts of profit and do nothing. I've got the county, which is quite frankly, one of the strongest tenants in LA, private or public sector as my tenant. I didn't pay much for it, it's sort of like paying nominal amount for a house, but someone's paying you a premium to rent it. You're not gonna say anything, you're just gonna keep it going, the challenge is that the people that have been, uh, um, dis-serviced or the constituents of the city of Hawthorne. And those that live in the community have sat there and said, well, wait a minute, you promised us decades ago, you were gonna do something, you still haven't done anything. You made all this money, what is your plan? Similar to those residents in the, uh, in the Crenshaw corridor that I mentioned earlier. They haven't owned that site as long as the Hawthorne Mall, there's no question, but those residents are scratching their head saying the same thing that your residents are.
You're good, Councilmember Montero?
Okay, let's go to Ms. English, thank you.
Well, real quick question before, real quick comment, Councilmember English, let me just mention it, uh, Mr. Beck?
Yes, sir.
Well, essentially, could this be qualified as land banking? Or, I mean, I hate that, I mean, you say, I mean, it sure sounds like it, wait till the damn price and just sell it and you made a profit after waiting thirty years. But you know, but, and then I also, the concern of the resident that says, you know, how do we prevent land banking? Do we have resolutions, do we have ordinances, do we have state laws preventing it? What recourse do we have in case these pe- what these individuals are doing is just land banking, are there any provisions that, against that or what?
Uh, um, it's a great question, Mr. Mayor, I'll leave that up to, you know, the legal side of things, I'm not an attorney, obviously. Um, the definition of land banking in my world is a, is a site that they have that's, that's obsolete and nothing's there. They do have the county there, um, they are a tenant, they have paid. Um, so technically from my standpoint, not the legal standpoint, but from the operational or real estate standpoint, no, um. But I will make the comment, when they bought the site decades ago, what was promised has not been delivered. That I can say, and I would say that right there, um, whenever there's, and I, and I've represented municipalities many times over my career. Um, that is not the spirit of why the municipality sold them the site at market. That was not the vision of the public-private partnership decades ago, I can say that definitively and I think everyone involved in this can say that definitively.
Okay, Councilmember English?
Um, Christopher, hello?
Hi, Councilmember, how are you?
Good, I have a question.
Yes.
A real simple one. Have you engaged with the Charles Company or reached out to Armin Gabay to have a sit down regarding your role? In the city with regards to the mall?
That's a great question, I have not reached out to Armin or Mark, obviously they're brothers, um, nor anyone at the Charles Company. I would like to, I wanted to be sensitive to my role as a, a consultant on behalf of the city of Hawthorne and, and would like the ability to speak with them. Um, but I have not done so as of yet, no, and, 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 and I appreciate the question, I, I would like that permission from you. Uh, the body, the electeds to be able to do that, um, because I think there's a lot of, um, validity to it. I think them knowing, um, that you've got someone like myself, um, who's been in the business for decades, who works at one of the largest firms in the world and is very well-known in the marketplace. As someone on your side of the table, um, I think will add not only credibility but viability to actually getting something done there. I believe what they've done over the past has been, yeah, yeah, we'll promise, we'll do it, we'll do it and then it never pencils, right? Well, now you have somebody here to vet, well, no, it really does pencil, um, or, or whatever the case may be. Um, I would like permission to do that, whether it's to Sarah Withers to start, who's the Development Director, or all the way up to Armin or Mark. Um, the principals of the company that give eyes, um, or Gabes, I should say, um. I would like the permission from the elected body to do that, but I, I, I certainly did not do that, nor would I have the intention of doing that without, uh, your blessing and, and approval.
Yeah, that's the simple question I had, because I believe it's necessary, because, uh. At the end of the day, there's a consensus that we wanted a consultant that was experienced enough and had history with the Charles Company with regards to. Uh, having a sit down conversation, meetings of the minds to pretty much be the facilitator between the council members in the city and the Charles Company, so. In my opinion, I think it should have been made, the contact should have been made right after the first presentation with Sarah. So moving forward, I'd like to see that happen and then, second of all. There has to be a discussion, uh, as there was today from callers calling in expressing their concerns and that's the community that we represent. And I have to thank those that have called in and expressed their concerns with regards to what they'd like to see there. Oftentimes, there's people that call in, they're not, that are not Hawthorne residents. They just, you know, want to be able to, to provide input, which is fine. And then there's others that, uh, you know, want to do the blame game, which is fine too. The city council at one time had a consensus and a vote collectively to make housing on top of the mall. With the, with the, uh, design of it being an outlaw, an outlet mall, which many council members, I believe, liked the idea and thought there was. Uh, potential for it to, to, um, come to fruition, however, that never did. But in those times, there was, you know, discussion with the community and there was outreach that was made. And there was, you know, suggestions that was suggested, um. We all know at the end of the day, we could sit here and discuss and go circles over and over and over again. About, you know, what it coulda, shoulda and what we'd like to see there, at the end of the day, it's not ours. That's why it's important that we sit down with the owner. We need to show initiative, there needs to be an initiative on the part of the city. Yes, they presented us, uh, a project, might not be favorable. But that's where we start the discretion and the discussions on what it is that we'd like to ultimately see and how we could work together collectively to maybe, uh, narrow that down. And there's lots of, uh, discussion of not wanting any housing whatsoever, just, you know, a, a large, uh. Corporation or, or entity such as, you know, it was suggested rumor wise that Amazon is coming there. Well, some of that rumor is true, they've got vehicles parked there.
Right. True.
Those are the vehicles that, you know, that is stirring up other controversy, but having said that. It's not ours, there has to be a sit down discussion with the owner. Armin Gabay, his brother, whomever, because. I understand he's got his architect, he's got Sarah, that's, you know, doing the, the. The communication between the city and, 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 and the. The, what is it, the work, work groups with us, right, on discussing work groups with us on, on potential. I'd like to see more conversation that is direct with the owner. And if there is gonna be, uh, a community input, I had expressed this previously. That the Charles Company look into doing that, whether it's a survey that's mailed out to the community at large. With some potential, uh, things that they would like to see, whether it be some questions and then some answers, um. Outreach is important, yes, there was an outreach done many, many years ago, some twenty years or whatever it was and. It was hosted up above the mall. And, uh, there were some participants that came and discussed it. And there's been nothing more of that, that was a long time ago, but at the end of the day, it's just not us. It's just not us that makes the decisions here and that's what people need, need to understand. Where, 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 we could only do so much. So I'd like to, again, uh. Make that outreach, have that discussion, um, and then. With regards to. Uh. This, the, the, the potential sale, uh, there has to be that discussion too. But it has to come from him and it has to be asked of him. What, what, you know, would you like to see it sold, are you looking to sell it, you know? Because if that's the case. We're gonna be sitting for a longer period of time, in my opinion, unless there's somebody that comes with hard cash. And pays cash for that location and develops it immediately. And there's been discussions about the MBA, the, you know, the, um. I should say the major league, major league basketball, you know, all these different entities looking to maybe. Develop that into, you know, facility of sorts similar to El Segundo and the Lakers and the hockey, the Kings, these types of things. But again, these are all just rumors, just discussion, just talk, that in the, in the number of years that we've been doing this, it had, nothing has come of this. I think that's the frustration of just not council members, but the community, there's a, there's a sense of frustration. And again, it's a collective, it has to be, you know, a collective of the city council members in agreement. Nobody could move anything with just being one person. So for those that are calling in suggesting that, you know, one or the other is gonna make and break the development, you know? Uh, whether or not it gets developed or not and how it gets developed, you know, I think they're living in la-la land. It takes a collective majority of the council to move anything forward. So that was just my two cents, because I haven't heard anything on whether or not there's been an actual sit down and something coming from Mr. Gabay himself. Uh, as far as you and him, that you could come back with and provide us, uh, some additional. Comments that he had or has.
Absolutely, Councilmember, um, would, can call him this afternoon, um, absolutely wanted to, to, to ensure. Um, that I have the, the authorization to do that and, um, my apologies if, if, uh, my interpretation of that was wrong. Um, I always want to make sure that, um, the client and in this instance is the, um, constituents of the city of Hawthorne as well as the electeds. Um, I have got, um, the approval to do so, um, and, and happy to make that phone call this afternoon and, and, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think that's absolutely the appropriate measure to go and, um, to use layman's terms. Um, advise them that we're now talking on an equal footing, not that you weren't equal before, but in terms of being able to. Call them for, uh, things that may not necessarily be true in terms of, oh, well, that doesn't pencil, um, or there's no demand for that. Um, those sort of answers and those cheeky sort of kick the can down the road, um, are not acceptable answers from my perspective and really is something that. Um, would be embraced and, and discussed during, uh, during that, uh, assuming the group is, is okay with that.
Through the chair.
And let me, and let me just finish, um.
Go ahead, finish.
With regards to, uh, folks calling in and talking about what they'd like to see there. When we had a study session, the first one in March, and it was asked about affordability, housing affordability. It came out of their mouth that they are not a low-income housing developer. So let's put that out there, okay? So this is them telling us, because we asked the question and we want to be able to, um. Give, give some recommendations and give some, uh, suggestions that came from the community. And the response was, they are not low-income housing developers. So I want to put it out there, so that we could, in a sense, not necessarily stop receiving that type of. Of, of suggestions, but just so that folks understand who are calling in, this is something we've already addressed and this was the response that we got back from the owner.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember.
No, yeah, for sure, that's a good point.
So again, we, we need, again, we need Mr. Beck. To have a conversation. One. That is understood and more importantly, that allows us and gives us an opportunity to engage and to use discretion. And that's what I'd like to see.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem?
Yes, um, I don't disagree with the concept of Mr. Beck speaking with the owner. But I also, after having this conversation today, I feel as though it's probably going to be of no value. Um, I think at this point. If we're going to have a conversation with the owner, we need to be very clear. That the council is not happy with the presentations of, of, of his representatives. And that we're ready to move to the next step, understanding that we don't own the property. However, if you remember, we were, we were doing this as a trial balloon to see if he was serious about. About doing something with this property, based on our discussion today. Um, based on what Mr. Beck said about lost opportunities that he's had over the past few years. The land has, uh, I mean, he's, financing has been rel- relatively cheap. He could have done so much, he could have developed the mall over the past eight years relatively inexpensively. And didn't do so. Um. We've given him so many chances, that mall has been sitting idle for years. I think we're, I think we've, I think we have seen all we need to see, I don't really think he wants, he's very serious. I'm for, I'm willing to make another shot at this and have another discussion. Um, with him, if Mr. Beck feels this is, this will be of any value. But he needs to be very clear, I think if he's going, going to speak with him, the council is not pleased. And. He need, if, if he's going to speak with him, he needs to make it clear. That we're not sitting around waiting again for him to give us another, um. Another, uh, presentation or, or, uh, or idea or, um. Presentation that isn't, isn't really viable and that he isn't even serious about. So I'm, I'm, I'm in the camp that says, put up a shut up, actually.
Council, okay, so, uh, Mr. Mr. Beck?
Yes, sir.
Shut up, okay? Okay.
I, I was just gonna comment to, to Mayor Protem's, um, um, comments and that is, um. I do feel that a face-to-face is valuable, um, and I will say that. Um, in my experience in representing municipalities or working on behalf of municipalities, um, this sort of dance occurs. Um, I can't say that I'm gonna ride in and save the world, but what typically happens is. The developer that's kind of been playing the game gets right in line, um, pretty quickly, once. The municipality is someone like myself at one of the large firms, um, representing their interest.
But dances don't usually take ten years, do they?
Well, no, 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 well, it depends on what dance, no, it doesn't, but, but. Typically, unless there's someone like me who's calling their bluff or calling them on their, um. Crap or whatever the right, pardon me for using that language.
No, no, no.
But, you understand what I mean is, now it's, we're talking equal playing field, right? You've got somebody that can call them on their, hey, that ain't gonna work kind of thing and oh, by the way, this whole notion of. Well, this doesn't pencil and the money's not there, there's also other subsequent questions I can ask them in the face-to-face meeting. Things such as, who's your financing source, where are you getting the money for this? If they come and they give you the greatest concept ever that everybody agrees to, how are they gonna pay for it? Things such of that nature can be vetted out in that and, and, and that's why I feel pretty strongly a face-to-face would be beneficial, but I agree with you, Mayor Protem. Dances do not take ten years, let alone twenty or thirty years.
Mr. Beck, so, um, I, I appreciate. Yeah, Mr. Beck, I appreciate the questions, uh, that, you know, with the, the concern and, uh, Councilmember English. Suggesting the face-to-face, but, um, I just feel that, um. We need to hear from the developer in one of these Zoom meetings that are live and to the public. So they can see for themselves what kind of conversations are taking place, I'm pretty sure there's some, some questions that you can ask them that are appropriate for a face-to-face. But the main gist of this whole thing is we need to see from the developer himself, Mr. Gabay. Or Ms. Withers, if he's always gonna resort to Ms. Withers representing him, I mean, that says a lot, I mean, he can't speak for himself. Um, so I, I would, I would prefer having any conversations that you have in a Zoom format. But if you feel that there's some questions that you can, um, ask that are appropriate in a private face-to-face. You, you advise us on that, but, um, there's a lot of residents that are looking at this and, uh. They want, I think they should see for themselves what kind of song and dance they've been doing and they're going to give us so that. They want, I think they should see for themselves what kind of song and dance they've been doing and they're going to give us so that. They won't take our word for it. They'll see the video themselves and see what their company is saying to us. Okay, uh, council member Montero and then English, go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Beck, I was thinking about this conversation, but. I would prefer maybe for you to have that conversation with Charles Company or with Gabe or Mark. Maybe after this, that second meeting, right? Because we have scheduled a second meeting for, I believe, on the twentieth with Charles Company. And we, we gave them some. Some, some basically direction that this plan that they present on that first meeting was not acceptable. So I wanna see if they're going back and redesign their, their plan. Or, or, or so what they're gonna bring to the table on the next meeting, right? And then maybe you can go ahead and, and have that meeting on one on one. With Omega Bay or with Mark Gabe, et cetera, et cetera. The, the other thing that we, as a council, you know. There is a way that maybe we can help him get some money, right? If he decide that he wants to do a, a public private project. We could, you know, the city can write grants to all these states, federal. To bring him some money to create some public and private project, like you said, you know, green spaces. Or even maybe medical facilities or senior housing, public parking. All of these projects, we can actually help him get some free dollars. To, to build, to build something. So let's, let's start talking about how can we help him? Giving him some, some ideas and then if, if he doesn't do nothing, then like Ms. Valentine said, we're gonna give him our own dance.
I just make one comment to that and, and I'm not sure if the group is familiar with the pending.
Infrastructure?
Excuse me?
The infrastructure bill?
No, I was gonna say the pending legal matters facing one of.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
Okay, so that also pays a major factor in this. Banks don't finance people that are currently in that position. Period. And, and, and on top of that, I'm not so sure the public private partnership. You would want to publicly in private, have a public private partnership with a group such as that. I'm, I'm happy to talk to whomever. Just to make it very clear, to the mayor's point, I look at it as, as a hybrid. Nobody, obviously the constituents need to hear it for themselves and be a part of this. But I also believe the group needs to understand, I've got decades of, of, of experience in this and I've worked with them and dealt with them before. Not on their behalf, but on others' behalf. There are, there are things that can be said and things that can be. Discussed, things such as financing, things such of their capital source that will not be publicly discussed, they just wouldn't do it. And, and most don't. So there's things such as that nature. So, you know, I'm happy to do either or. I do believe council member. Res has, has a great point and that is. You've got, you've had decades to do this. Another week or two isn't gonna change it per se and I, I know you didn't, didn't say that council member, but. To me. Letting them know very simply, hey, look, we're now on an even playing field. You're a commercial real estate developer. And I've been in the business twenty years. I've negotiated against you and I won't say against you, but I've, I've negotiated with a client on my side. With them being the owner or the landlord. They know I know how they work. They know I know how they tick. They know I know how the whole thing works over there. And what it does is it adds instantaneous credibility to what we're all trying to achieve, which is a project being built there. And if they're not gonna build it, somebody come in and build it. And there is something to be said on their side of it. There's no question in my mind, they've continued to move the needle or move the goalposts. And please don't take this the wrong way. It's because you haven't had anyone like me to call them on, on it. And there's other municipalities, City of Carson, who I represent and, and handle most of their real estate matters was the same thing. One of the largest owners of industrial property in the world, they couldn't seem to copacetically work together. They hired me and now. We completed a forty five million dollar land swap and that city is now getting a brand new Public Works and Parks and Recs headquarters. That they haven't had for six decades. Never would have happened and I'm not sitting here saying I'm the greatest thing since sliced bread. But what it did was called that group to say, oh, wow, the city's got somebody that we deal with, that we play ball with. Better come to the table.
Can we, can we come up to a conclusion now? Okay, but we need to, okay, we need to come up with the conclusion of when he is going to talk to them. We are, I think. That there's two options here. We, we wait until the op, he speaks, he can speak to them today. Or he can speak to them after they come back and they address our concerns. So. Yeah, go ahead, council member.
So I, I don't have any con, my, my position is let us speak with them today to help, uh, give them some greater direction. And put some pressure on them to perform. I, I don't think that they've been given enough of that to have any confidence in them coming back with anything that we're gonna. We're gonna wanna be happy with. You know, I'm in the interest of expediting this whole thing. You know, we brought in a, an expert professional who has. Experience in this matter, experience with this particular developer. I would like to, I don't know if we need to make a motion or not, I'd like to move that we let Mr. Beck. Initiate communication with him immediately and of course we'll report back to the council. You know, a, a, a reporter of, of his, of that experience.
Well, let's, let's go around the council. Let's go around the council. Let's go around the council because that's one idea. I seem to have more of a lean towards what council member Montero says. And partially what council, Mayor Protem. Valentine has said is we've already given them enough chances. They already know what we want. I mean, I think they've been given enough. They don't. What other help do they need? We, they, we need to. Well, guide them. I mean, we've been guiding them all along. We've told them what we want and what we don't, so. I'm more of in line with what council member Montero says.
Before we go, before we start going to the council, Ken, I, I wanna hear from Russell. As, as our attorney, what do you think about the idea?
Yeah, yeah, actually that's good.
Yeah, I love the idea that he speak directly to the Gabeys. That's excellent and that I even recommend that he speak to them before our, our, our next meeting. So that he has something to report to us.
Okay, so I, I second the motion from David Parisson. Thank you, Russell.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, again, that, that was something very simple in, in, in asking because at the end of the, the day, we're the ones that selected Mr. Beck.
He didn't necessarily say when he was going to speak with them or.
No, no, but, 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 you know, when you said that there was some recommendations and that they're supposed to fix those recommendations and then bring those back to us. I think, I think the engage, he should have engaged. So that he could, he could assure that whatever is returned to us is exactly what we're asking.
That's a fair point. That's a fair point. But I second that or somebody second? All right, roll call vote and this is, this, this will pretty much finalize the meeting and we set a new meeting date. Who's going to call the? Okay, I'll call it. It doesn't matter at this point.
Council member Montero? Council member Patterson? Council member Reyes English? Council member Valentine? Mayor Vargas? The vote reflects, uh, mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. Mayor, before you, before you finish the meeting, I, I wanna ask Mr. Beck a question, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Beck. Can you also? Look into your world, right, of, of developer that you're so knowledgeable about? There is any potential. Developer or business that would like to come to that mall that you can tell us? And, and maybe we could facilitate this dialogue between us, that business and, and, and Charles Company?
Absolutely. I mean, I, I can say that right now. Vella Group is one, Tishman Spire is one. The Related Companies is one. The. Their name is slipping me now. I apologize. They, they, they're a large developer who's predominantly in, uh, Saris Regis would be one. I mean, I could name probably twenty of them.
So can, 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 can maybe in the near future give us a synopsis or summary of each of these develop? If, if they were acquired at mall or do some, what they would do over there so we could give an idea. That, okay, we got all these people ready to develop something there and then we have Charles Company and Gabe on these other side. Playing games, right?
No, no question. Just to summarize real quick, council member, developers make money by building, right? Money's cheap, right? So take the gap eyes to the side or the Charles Company to the side. All these other guys. They just wanna build, build, build. Lincoln Property Group, excuse me, that was the one that was slipping my mind. They all have money. They've got mass amounts of line of credit. They just don't have any projects to build because there's no land. So they're really gonna go off of what we tell them we want, or I shouldn't say we, that you want as the client or as the constituents want. But I'm absolutely more than happy to do that. Real quick to Mr. Mayor's question regarding value. Back in twenty eighteen, there was a note on my computer that I was able to find during this. The get, the, the Charles Company was not entertaining anything less than a hundred million two years ago. The, the, the guidance market wise was in that eighty to eighty five million dollar range. That's subject to demolition analysis, environmental contamination and other aspects of it. So what that tells me is they weren't looking at anything that was a hundred million or above. Nobody got to the hundred million above. Again, consistently with moving the goalposts.
And I heard one hundred and twenty million, so there you go. That's what I.
Hey, you know, it, it, it just keeps. You offer me eighty, I'll go to a hundred. You offer me a hundred, give me one twenty, so.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Beck. You have your marching orders. Talk to, give him a call today whenever, as soon as you. Have all your questions lined up and things you wanna let him know or ask him and stuff. Mr. City Attorney? What is the schedule for the meetings? Are we going to wait for Mr. Beck to? Uh, tell us that he has a response, have a special meeting before? Or are we going to wait until after the presentation of, uh, from Charles Company?
Oh, what's your pleasure? Would you like to have another? Would you like to have a study session just with Mr. Beck if he's able to talk to the Gabeys?
Yes, I, I would like that.
Be next week.
Okay, should we tentatively schedule something for next week?
That's fine. For me.
Which day are we talking about here?
Same day next week.
Can we do later, like Thursday or Friday later next week?
That sounds good, actually.
Okay, how about Friday? Want to be Friday at eleven AM?
Thursday would be preferable for me.
That's a Thursday.
But afternoon, afternoon. One or two.
Thursday at one?
I cannot do it because that's, that's the, the third, the third, the Thursday of the month. Right? Well done, because I have the sanitation district meeting. At one thirty. Yeah, it could be maybe two thirty or three o'clock is fine with me.
On Thursday, that's fine.
Three o'clock?
Three o'clock.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself, Councilwoman Valentine.
Yeah, I can't. I'm sorry. I can't make it at that time.
What time do you have, Ms. Valentine?
Well, Thursday is difficult. Thursday morning I could do it, if it has to be Thursday.
Yeah, no, it doesn't have to be for me, but I'm just saying I can't on eleven o'clock. This was difficult for me to make because I have other commitments.
Any, any chance we could do next Wednesday, middle of the day or early afternoon?
I could do Wednesday in the middle of the afternoon. I could do, I could do, uh, Wednesday at two.
Are you gonna be able to get a, a discussion, Mr. Beck, by Wednesday?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's, that, what, what I wanna do is be able to have that discussion and even a potential Zoom slash face to face if possible. So I, I, I can, I will be available to do that. I can't speak for the other side.
Can we? This is all tentative, right? If he can't finish this conversation, then we just won't have the meeting.
Same for Wednesday at two.
Okay. Yeah, and then if he doesn't have, so we will, we'll postpone it.
Yeah, he'll let us know. We, we, we just need to kind of carve out some time. And just, and just let us know as soon as possible when you've decided that these guys have decided or. Either they can't meet, they can't meet with you or they decided that maybe they don't wanna have the conversation. Who knows?
Certainly possibility.
I'm not trying to lambast either. No, okay, but no, uh, no, not at all. I'm pretty sure you'll have a conversation with somebody from over there. Absolutely. Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Just to be clear, our next meeting with the Charles Company is at eleven o'clock on Monday, April nineteenth.
Okay, Monday, April nineteenth. Okay, so that's a.
The nineteen, not the twenty, huh?
That's a good point. Um, are you, is your calling them going to be? Uh, beneficial to them and being able to meet what our needs are if you try to call them today? Is it gonna help them along? Is it, is there a good purpose for it? Fulfill the purpose?
In my opinion, yes. Um, and I, yeah, I mean, in my opinion, yes, because it's, hey, we've just had another meeting, you know. Hopefully you got, you know, yes, I do believe that to be the case, yes.
All right, so.
And I think it's most productive, right, for the, our representative people to have. You know, the opportunity to have ongoing conversations and back and forths, you know, they, you know, have these structured meetings being the only time that. There's communication to the Charles Company, I think slows down the process.
All right, so council, so when are we saying Wednesday, Wednesday at two? Okay? Okay, council, thank you all for being here. Uh, so Wednesday, April fourteenth at two o'clock. That's our scheduled tentative meeting date, barring any, any cancellations. This meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.